Good evening. Welcome to Monday, October 23rd, 2023 Fall Special Town Meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce a few folks. Over to my right, we have Scott Hood of the Select Board Chairman, Janice Livingston, Vice Chair, and Sean Copeland, the Clerk. Sitting with them is our Town Manager, Robert Pontbrian. To my left, our Town Clerk, Susan Copeland. And sitting down in the second row on this corner is our Attorney Greg Carbo from the Firm of KP Law. I'd like to ask you all, please, to stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Been reminded I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you. Now I'll ask Susan to read the return of the warrant.
Am I on? Okay. Town of Air Special Annual Fall Town Meeting Warrant. Air Shirley Regional High School Auditorium, 141 Washington Street, Air, Massachusetts, 01432. Monday, October 23rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Middlesex County. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Air qualified to vote in Town Elections and Affairs to meet at the auditorium in the Air Shirley Regional High School located at 141 Washington Street, Air, Massachusetts, on Monday, the 23rd day of October, 2023, at 7 o'clock in the evening, then and there to act in the following articles. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereof to the Town Clerk before the date appointed for said meeting. Given under our hands this 3rd day of October, AD 2023, Scott A. Hood, Chair; Janice L. Livingston, Vice Chair; Sean C. Copeland, Clerk.
Thank you very much, Susan.
I just have to finish, sorry. True copy attests, Susan E. Copeland, Town Clerk, October 5th, 2023. As directed in the foregoing warrant, I have this day posted three attested copies in three public places, one of which was the Town Hall, at least 14 days before said meeting, all as herein directed. Samuel A. Goodwin, Jr., Constable, October 5th, 2023.
Thank you. Article 1. Adoption of General Laws 39, subsection 23D, the Mullen Rule. To see if the town will vote to accept for all boards, committees, or commissions holding adjudicary hearings in the town, the provisions of General Law, Chapter 39, subsection 23D, which provide that a member of a board, committee, or commission holding an adjudicary hearing shall not be disqualified from voting in the matter solely due to the member's absence from one session of such hearing, provided that certain conditions are met or take any action thereon or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Hood?
I move that the town vote to accept provision of General Laws, Chapter 39, section 23D, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Livingston. Any discussion on the article? I think we have a small presentation. Danny Ruiz, our Town Planner. For those of you who haven't met Danny, I introduce you to Danny Ruiz. He's our Town Planner. Danny, the Town.
Nice to meet you all. We can skip this since this was just read. So this is Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23DA, which is the full section of the Mullen's Rule adoption. Notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary upon municipal acceptance of this section for one or more types of adjudicatory hearings, a member of any municipal board, committee, or commission when holding an adjudicatory hearing shall not be disqualified from voting in that matter solely due to the member's absence from no more than a single session of the hearing at which testimony or other evidence is received. Before any such vote, the member shall certify in writing that he has examined all that he has examined all evidence received at the missed session, which evidence shall include an audio or video recording of missed sessions or transcript thereof. The written certification shall be part of the record of the hearing. Nothing in this section shall change, replace, negate, or other supersede applicable quorum requirements. All right, so what does this mean? So the adoption of the Mullen's Rule will allow for members on boards, committees, or commissions that hold adjudicatory hearings in the Town of Air not to be disqualified for any particular application due to just missing one hearing. This adoption would allow the member to review the meeting minutes, meeting video, and all information presented at that meeting. Once the member has reviewed all of the information, they will sign a form attesting that they have reviewed, all necessary information, to be able to participate in future meetings and vote as well. The Mullen's Rule allows for a member to miss just one meeting without being disqualified. If that member misses a second meeting, at that point, the member is not allowed to vote on the particular application. The member is still allowed to participate. Why should we approve this? So, members that sit on these boards, all are volunteers and have normal day lives, like we all do, and the other members, these members volunteer their free time to help out the town on these boards. Sometimes there's unforeseen conflicts where they have to miss a meeting, and sometimes this just can't be there's no way to fix that, and so this wouldn't penalize them for missing that one meeting. This also makes it fair for the applicant that's before one of those boards so that they can have all the members participate and vote on that. This is a huge effect on applications like a special permit, which needs a four out of five vote for an approval, so a supermajority. The adoption of the Mullen's Rule will also allow for applicants and members not to be penalized and still be able to do the job as volunteers at the Town of Air. Any questions?
Yes. Ms. Connolly?
Ms. Moderator, thank you. I'll refer to you as Danny, since Mr. Moderator did. Would you define an adjudicatory board?
So an adjudicatory board is a board, like a select board, conservation commission, a planning board, zoning board. So those are boards that act on a permit. There's votes for specific permits, like a NOI, RDA, special permits, site plan review, and ZBA, special permits or variances.
Thank you. I understand ZBA, I understand planning, I understand conservation. What about assessors, when they issue abatements?
I don't think assessors is considered adjudicatory, but I would have to check on that.
Fair enough. I won't hold you to that. I'm not sure how the selectmen fit into that, because the only adjudicatory thing they would do would be with respect to dogs and abatements.
So there are certain towns that have select boards that have other permits, so it's just kind of a catch-all for all other towns as well?
And I don't mean to belabor this. I just want to make it clear, it's not for every single town elected or appointed board. Only those with adjudicatory authority.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, the article carries unanimously. Thank you. Article 2. CPA Affordable Housing Trust Funding. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund of FY 2024 balanced reserve from the housing category, the sum of $200,000 to the Air Affordable Housing Trust for the following purposes: Air Rental Assistance Program, $72,000; Administration and Financial Audit of the Trust, $3,000; Future Acquisition of Affordable Housing, $125,000, for a total of $200,000, or take any action thereon or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Livingston?
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, FY 2024, balanced reserve from the housing category, the sum of $200,000 for the Air Affordable Housing Trust for the purposes printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Seconded. Thank you. Thank you for the second, Mr. Copeland. I think we have a short presentation? No? Thank you. Any questions on this article? Comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The article passes unanimously. Article 3. Bylaw Amendment, Chapter 130, Dogs. Absent any objections, I shall dispense with the reading of this article as it appears in the warrant. Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Copeland?
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 130, Dogs, of the general bylaws of the town as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Thank you, Ms. Livingston. It has been seconded. I believe we have a presentation on this. Chief? Chief Gill?
Okay, how are you everybody? Chief Gill? So, this is the first of two bylaw amendments that I'm recommending that the Town of Air adopt. The first one we're going to talk about tonight is the Dog Bylaw, which is Chapter 130 in our Rules and Regulations. One of the primary goals to make in this recommendation and to adopt this is to kind of streamline our dog bylaw, which really hasn't been updated in some time. One of the goals was to bring it into compliance with Mass. General Law by adopting the appropriate penalty structures. Also, to update our licensing fees. Right now, our licensing for dogs are $6 and $8, so spayed and neutered is $6, and not spayed and neutered is $8. Part of raising that cost is just to kind of absorb what it actually costs to make the tags and process all the applications that come in. Is this, this is what's written on it here? Okay, so as we see up here, so Chapter 14136 really highlights the definitions that the Animal Control Officer falls under, and it's quite luminous. In our original proposal, what we did was we kind of listed, not kind of, we listed all of the definitions that were in state law and other definitions that we wanted to have in there. After speaking with our town's attorneys, the recommendation was to just go with a reference to the state law. That way, if the state law ever changes, we don't have to come back and make any adjustments to the bylaw itself. There are other definitions that we adopted, we wanted to keep in there, such as who the hearing authority is, and in different municipalities, that could be different. And we wanted to make sure things like that were highlighted, that were specific to Air. The other parts that we wanted to do was direct the residents to the Chapter 14136A to 174E, and that really is all of the regulations that govern the dogs in the Commonwealth. And so that kind of really solidifies what we're talking about as part of our rules and regulations. What we also wanted to do was really identify the prohibited behaviors and responsibilities of dog owners that were listed in certain areas and not in others, and they should have been. So this kind of highlights what is expected of dog owners. Right now, if we pick up a dog and have to take it to a kennel which is out of town, we don't recoup that expense. We're adding in a fee for that, that if we have to pick up a dog, we can't find the owner and we have to take it to a kennel, then, you know, there is an expense, there is a fee that has to be paid by the dog owner upon claiming the dog. We also codified the process of the nuisance and dangerous dog hearings and complaints, and those are found in Chapter 14157. This is another area, when we originally proposed this, we highlighted everything that was in the law, we just kind of copied and pasted it in there. What we, again, under advice of our counsel, was why do that? Because if the law changes, then we have to go back and do the bylaw again. So what we did was we made a reference to the bylaw, a reference to the, sorry, general law, and then have some, you know, minor clarifications in the bylaw itself. One of the things that we also wanted to change was rate, as we are right now, we don't start enforcing late fees until April 1st. So you are required to have your dog registered by January 31st, but we don't start enforcing until April 1st. In consultation with the Clerk's office, we wanted to shorten up that timeframe so we could get all our affairs in order, get all of our listings squared away and done. And we also, we updated our fines for unlicensed and public disturbance and nuisances listed, and these are all in accordance with Mass. General Law. Click to the next page. So these are the proposed new licensing fees. So spayed and neutered are $10, and again, that's up from $6. Unaltered dogs, that's up from $8. And then we have a new category of a dangerous dog. So if the hearing authority, which is the select board, deem a dog through a hearing a dangerous dog, and this happens very infrequently, but if somebody does have a dangerous dog and it's adjudicated as a dangerous dog, in order for the owner to keep that dog in the Town of Air, they have to pay a licensing fee of $300. We updated our fines for licensing late fees. That's in accordance with Mass. General Law. There's our pickup fee. For public disturbance and nuisance violations, first offense is 50, second offense is 100, and so on, as you can read. And those, again, are in accordance with the general law and a portion of our bylaws. The animal control, the dog bylaw was never adjusted when we adjusted them in another portion of our bylaws, which is in the Section 1 of our Rules and Regs. And we updated our kennel fees for, and we went up in those slightly. So 1 to 4 dogs, 40, 5 to 10, 70, and 10-plus dogs, 100. And that is about it. It sounds like there's a lot of change, but really, we're bringing it into conformity with Mass. General Law.
That is the presentation, Mr. Moderator? Thank you. Do you have questions for the chief? It's over here, please?
Yes. Yeah, I have a dog.
Excuse me, may I ask you, identify yourself and your address?
Mike Geller, 34 Fletcher Street, Air.
Thank you.
And, you know, we get complaints that our dog barks excessively, but it varies. Sometimes the dog is barking at someone approaching a fence or on our property, and we get calls from the animal officer saying that your dog is, there's a complaint, and, you know, we'd like to know who's making these calls, what time are these calls coming in? And...
Thank you. I don't know that that's germane to the motion to the warrant article. I don't know, Chief, do you want to, is there something we can take care of outside of the meeting?
A dog under the 130 has a right to bark on its property or defend it itself, and/or if there's something on the property, the dog has that right to bark. Is there any merit when someone calls in a complaint that that would warrant an investigation? Or would that be defined as, well, that's a first offense, you get $50? Every time someone calls, okay, will you, someone called? How is the animal officer to respond? And in a timely manner? As far as the complainant, how many times has that person been calling? And, you know, you might have to look at the person or persons who are calling, because in the proximity of my area, there are other dogs directly across the street and behind that may, it could be that dog that's barking. But then again, my dog is the one being blamed for it. So I don't want someone to come and say, well, your dog was barking because it was a complaint. What evidence, factual evidence, would they present to the animal officer to say, yes, this is the dog that I saw and heard, and I have a recording or whatever? But I believe this first, second, and third offense, you're going to have to come up with a little bit more investigative technique to say that we have checked in the proximity of the area to make sure that it was your dog that was making this noise, or any other dog. We've checked in the area to find out exactly when the complaint came in. We checked all this other to make sure that when these complaints come in and you issue that fine, that it's correct, because there should be some sort of appeal process afterward to where the person who is getting that fine, he should be able to appeal to a district court or to a higher level, and then have a discovery of all the evidence that the animal officer may have obtained, so we can get down and get a fair and equitable decision.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator? Yes?
So I believe I hear a question in there. You had a lot to say, Mr. Geller, and I'll try and answer your question. We do perform an investigation, which sometimes includes a phone call, where we go out and we then begin to initiate an investigation, and that sometimes is the animal control, and in the animal control's absence, it would be an officer. And what we try to do at that point is make any observations that we can at that time. And if, you know, there are nothing that is, if there's nothing that we can really see, whether it's one of the officers or the animal control, then we try to reach out to the person that is making the complaint and find out what's happening. And we go from there. It does follow an investigative process. And, you know, we, you know, we try to do, you know, follow for this, the same we would do for any type of complaint that comes in. And, you know, and we have to investigate really any complaint that comes in. It would be inappropriate for us not to.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions? Ms. Nearing?
Lori Nearing, Highland Avenue. I had two questions, a couple of clarifications, if I could, please. On page 5, under Public Disturbance, letter D, as in dog, it seems to say that your dog is considered a public disturbance for not being spayed or neutered. Is that what that means?
If it's at large, meaning running around.
Okay. Okay, so if it is spayed and neutered and running around, it's okay?
Nope, nope. Again, this is pretty much taken, this part is taken out of state law, I believe. That, you know, being an unspayed female or unneutered at large is a nuisance. And I think if you read up, so being, under C, being permitted to run unrestrained at large is also a violation, but if you're a hunting dog, that does not constitute that. So if a hunting dog is in the process of hunting, then that doesn't constitute that.
Okay, that can lead me to, thank you. My second question then is, hang on a second. The section where we talked, you talked about a dog can run free for exercise, I think it was where you described the hunting dog. Sorry. Maybe somebody else can find it for me, where the hunting dog is discussed? Okay, well, I can see it at on page 3, another section where it says at large, a dog that is off premises of the owner, and so on, needs to be under physical control. When we look at the description of the conservation land and the trails at Pine Meadow Brook, I'm pretty sure that it does say that the dog needs to be under voice control or on a leash. Is that going to be acceptable with this new bylaw?
It is not going to be. Dogs have got to be, you know, on a leash unless they are a hunting dog in the process of hunting.
Okay, I do see it here now. I'm not sure how we would define a hunting dog. You mean actively hunting?
Hunters who have hunting dogs know what that means. I mean, it's a hunting dog. They assist in the process of hunting, whether it be birds or flushing out other animals.
So I think I'd like to ask if it's possible to make a small motion, and I'm wondering if this is legal first before, so I don't know if we need an attorney opinion, but for that letter, this is on page 5, letter C. It says, being permitted to run unrestrained at large, the running of hunting dogs, certified service dogs, and search and rescue dogs shall not constitute a public disturbance hereunder. The exercising of other dogs which are under physical control, and I would like to add, or voice control, at Pine Meadow Pond or other conservation trails in the Town of Air. So, in other words, we're expanding that definition so that people who own dogs and want their dog to exercise comfortably and not have to have their dog on a leash all the time have the right to do that on conservation land that has already been designated so. So, am I allowed to make a motion to make that change? And if so, could you help me on how to do that?
First of all, it should be, any amendment should be in writing.
Yes, I was going to say, do you have this in writing? Amendment in writing?
I have it on my sheet here. I handwrote it. You want me to bring it?
So I would defer a question if it could be specific to the land.
Thank you, I just want, I'm going to...
As long as I have something in writing.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry. Chief? Is it clear?
It is.
It is?
We have to have it in writing. Any amendment needs to be in writing.
Yes, I understand.
Yep.
And you have it and it's clear in writing?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I'd leave town, Phil.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, good evening to you, Mr. Moderator. So, the motion does need to be in writing. Do you have that?
Yes, we have that.
Okay, and can you read the full motion as it's been written?
Under Public Disturbance, C, being permitted to run unrestrained at large, the running of hunting dogs, certified service dogs, and search and rescue dogs shall not constitute a public disturbance hereunder. The exercising of other dogs which are under the physical control or voice control of their owner or keeper at Pine Meadow Pond Trails shall not constitute a public disturbance hereunder, providing permission of the landowner has been obtained.
And that landowner would be the Town of Air?
I'm sorry?
And the landowner in that case would be the Town of Air?
Okay, then. That's not written.
So we do have a motion that's in writing, sir.
Okay, and has that motion been seconded?
I have not asked for a second yet, sir, thank you. I wanted to make sure we had it in writing, so...
Gotcha.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
It does not say Town of Air, so it's...
I don't think it needs to. It's implied it needs to.
I think we should add it.
Okay. Okay.
Do you consider that friendly to the amendment?
I, I don't think that an individual dog owner needs to ask permission from the Town of Air, because it is in our bylaws already, that the Pine Meadow Pond Trails are specifically, you're allowed to walk dogs with voice control or leash.
I'm not fighting the point, Lori. I'm just making sure your amendment is specific. That's why I'm only asking if you wanna specifically write that. I'm not giving any pushback to them.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
She doesn't wanna include it.
Don't include it?
Don't include it, please.
Okay.
As, as it's written, then. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Yes.
On the amendment, please.
Mr. Moderator, I have some discussion on the amendment.
I'm sorry, Chief Gill. Yes, Chief?
So as we're talking about the Town of Air land that falls under the purview of the Conservation Commission, I would strongly not tie the hands of the Conservation Commission, who has specific authority over this land. So that's what I have on this. So, you know, whatever we're gonna do here, we could possibly be in conflict with the Conservation Commission.
Through the moderator, could you please explain what you mean by tie the hands of? The Conservation Commission has already passed this.
So the, the Conservation Commission are the ones who have the authority over conservation land by making this rule, and I'm not sure if this is an informal rule, a formal rule. I don't have that information now, but what we would be doing by this would be doing something that could possibly be going counter to what the Conservation Commission wants of their lands.
Through the moderator, is there anybody here from the Conservation Commission that can speak to that?
I believe we have someone coming forward, Ms. Nearing. Mr. Schmollerberger?
Good evening, everyone. John Schmollerberger, Air Conservation Commission. It is not our bylaw. It is just a policy.
Any other comments on the amendment?
Jillian Locar, Three Curly Circle.
Thank you.
I have been attacked by a dog under so-called voice control, and I would urge this amendment to fail, and I would urge us to go with the original wording here as per the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Tordella, Five Hideway. Through the moderator, have there been complaints? I don't know if she complained when she was attacked by a dog under voice control. Have there been complaints about dogs on public land attacking or being a problem or a nuisance?
Chief, can you speak to that?
I can speak in generality, that we have had complaints of dogs under voice control attacking people. And that's whether, I, I would say that it doesn't matter whether it's on public land, private land, or whatever. If a dog is on voice control and decides to act on its own, then there's no stopping it, which I believe is what the, I don't know if we caught her name, but what she's referring to. I believe I'm familiar with that incident.
So through the moderator, that means all this open space, the dogs, unless they're a hunting dog or a service dog, has to be on a leash?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Diskin?
My question was, first of all, for clarity, didn't you tell us that these, this adoption of the bylaw or change to the, recommended change to our local bylaw was in accordance with the state general laws?
Correct.
Can we turn around and change this language, if, well, go into the state if this is their language? Can we even amend it?
This is the state.
That's my first question. My second comment is, I've also had a situation where someone, dogs running up and down a trail, maybe fifty or eighty feet ahead of their owner. Now, I didn't put it in a complaint officially, but that was enough to scare me, and then the owner showed up and said they were under voice control. So I, I disagree with the whole concept of voice control, and I don't wanna take a shot at changing language. It's already in a state regulation, if that's the case.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Some clarification on this. So the, the section that we're talking about here is not out of state law. This is the rules and regulations that we have created and from other, from other bylaws that we've seen.
Thank you, Chief. Other comments, sir?
Yes. Mike Geller, thirty-four Fletcher Street. Earlier, we stated about the nuisance for a dog that has been deemed, that has been deemed a nuisance, and the fines were one hundred, amended to one hundred.
Excuse me, sir. At this point in time, we're discussing the amendment only. We'll get back to the main motion in a moment. Thank you. On this side?
Scott Murray, one Sandy Way. Just two comments, and then one, hopefully, motion D. The motion as, the amendment as proposed is extremely confusing in the sense that it's inserting it into the second part of this sentence by trying to carve out one specific area, and I think it takes away from the main body of what the purpose of the sentence was. So I would urge that we do not approve it as currently moved, because I think it's extremely confusing. The second part is, how is one to determine what is appropriate voice command or being under voice control? Who determines that? What's the definition of that, if we were to consider this amendment? And finally, if, I'd like to sort of move the, move this at some point here.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of the comment.
Can we move this question?
Move the question. Thank you. Question has been moved.
Mr. Moderator, I don't believe you can move the question. You speak to the issue. That's in the town meeting.
What's a question?
Thank you. So we have a vote on the suggested amendment.
Amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The amendment does not carry. Back to the main motion. Sir, I think you had a question on the main motion you wanted to bring up?
Yes. With regards to the fines imposed.
Can I ask you to speak into the microphone, please?
With, Mike Geller, thirty-four Fletcher Street. With regards to the fines being imposed on a dog which has been deemed a nuisance, on the, under that law, MGL thirty-seven, the solution for that after a public hearing was, the authority shall either dismiss the complaint or, or deem the dog a nuisance, which would result in remedial action to improve or make better the cause of the nuisance, of the nuisance behavior. To add on an amendment with a fine of one hundred, two hundred, and it goes on, I think that's excessive. I believe if, if the first offense happens, it should stay with the mass general law, which was, and I, which was what I just described under one fifty, one forty, one fifty-seven B, for, as far, not a dangerous dog, but a, a dog that has been deemed a nuisance. But I, I, I would totally object to the, the fines that go afterward.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Darren Woods, one forty-two Washington Street. And so my, it's a question on page four of the article, this public nuisance part, it's all struck, you know, the strike through there. In, in particular, the language, when it persistently and continually barks, is what my question is. That, that, that specific language doesn't seem to be carried over into the public disturbance part. My old eyes might have missed it or something. I just didn't know if you could comment on that.
No, absolutely. So the, the public nuisance part of that is actually found in the general law, where it, all of that language is taken from.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Conley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chief, I commend you.
Ms. Conley?
Up.
Just once, can you say your name and the address, please?
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Pauline Conley, Cambridge Street. Thank you, Chief. Commend you for updating this bylaw. I struggled with the public nuisance language being stricken until I went back and read it from first word. And I went to the general law today. There's, I don't know how many dozens of pages, from one thirty-six to one seventy-four, but I printed out just one thirty-six A, the definitions. And I would like to suggest no amendments, but once this bylaw is adopted and approved by the Attorney General, if it would be within your consideration to at least list one thirty-six A along with the bylaw on the town website, so residents don't have to go hunting for this. Because I know how to find it, you know how to find it, a lot of us know how to find it, but everybody doesn't. And I think everybody deserves to be able to find the definitions, especially that of nuisance dog, since most of that language has been stricken from the original, and the, also the definition of dangerous dog, which is also not in the new bylaw. So if we could add those twenty to twenty-five definitions, at least to the attachment, I think that would benefit the public greatly.
Thank you for that.
But thank you very much, and I totally support this change.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we're gonna vote on the article. Article three. All in favor?
Aye.
The article pa, article three passes. Article four, bylaw amendment, chapter two sixty-five, transient merchants. Similar to the last article, absent any objections, I shall dispense with the reading of this article as it appears in the warrant. Chief Gill, second act.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
May I make the motion, sir?
Yes, please.
All right. I move that the town votes to amend chapter two sixty-five transient merchants of the general bylaws of the town as printed in the warrant.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Hood, and thank you, Mr. Copeland. Chief?
Mr. Moderator. Again, this is, like, as he said, this is part two of some recommended, a recommended bylaw amendment. So what we were, again, here, the goal of this was to modernize and streamline the transient merchants bylaw, and to add a, a portion of this, which was something that has been on my mind and, and through a citizen who kind of brought it to my attention. So one of the, one of the things that we want to, to, to highlight in this is to talk about the application and investigation fee. So right now, if somebody wants to come in for, and we only have a one-year permit for, they come in, they fill out a simple form, and they pay five dollars. That gives them access to the Town of Air for one year. The, the, there's, the application itself gets processed by our office manager, who then passes it on to either myself or the deputy chief, and we conduct an investigation into the, the character and background of the, the person. And that could, depending on, you know, what needs to get done, that could take upwards of approximately a half hour. Seems like a short amount of time, but if you get enough of them, we've all had our solar companies knocking on our doors and home repairs, you know, and they, they tend to come in a, a wave. So we could spend at some point an hour or two processing a batch of applications. So we felt it prudent that an app, an application and background investigation fee, just on our part, was warranted. What we also wanted to do, and I, and I have seen this in, in bylaws around the Commonwealth, is have a, a structure of how long does a company wanna be in town? Some companies are only gonna be in town for one day. They're just gonna wanna do one thing. And for, you know, for that kind of process, you know, it, it, I'm recommending a fee structure as we have up above. So for a one-day permit, five dollars, I'm recommending is what it'd be set. If, if a company wants to be in town for one week, that, and you can see them up here, one month and one year. And, you know, we're, we're not in the business to make money, but what happens in, in, with these is we are constantly going out, verifying the, the permits that are out there, whether they're active or not. And so this kind of recoups for the town, the services that the police department has to go out and do and verify with the transient merchants. We're also shifting the yearly permits. Right now, they go from April to May. I don't know why we adopted that whenever we did, but I'm just recommending that we shift that to a calendar year. The, the yearly permits are from January to December thirty-first, and if a company comes in and they wanna be in town for several months, they will get a yearly permit, but the price will be prorated for the expiration date in December. The other thing that we wanna do is the, in, in the current bylaw, it was a little bit all over the place and kind, and frankly, didn't make sense. So we clarified the application investigation periods to five business days. And we also wanted, and this is the, kind of the big one that we wanted to talk about, is the no solicitation list. I got it on quotes, 'cause I think that's what we call it here. So what I, what I'm proposing is for the protection of our residents who don't want to have people knocking on their doors, is to be, opt to go into a no solicitation list, where you contact the police department in some form or fashion. We'll develop that if this is approved. And you will be on a list, and every time that a solicitor comes into town, we will give them the most updated version of this list. And violating part of that, violating that would be one of the, one of the ways that you could be in violation of the bylaw and, and be fined for this. You know, so we're, we're envisioning a list that's, you know, constantly, you know, being added to or subtracted as, if people move out of town. But we're gonna, you know, try to really make it an accessible document where people can, you know, somehow get in touch with us. You know, I'm thinking off the top of my head, whether it be a phone call or some sort of web form through the town's IT department. We also wanted to add language for the chief to revoke permits for cause. So right now, if we have a solicitor in town that we're getting calls on, that they're aggressive, that they're, you know, being forceful, or they're just not taking no, we have to have a hearing on that. And we have to, you know, give them a piece of paper, have a hearing. And then after that hearing, then the, they can then be removed from town. What this bylaws, this change is proposing is that for cause, if we are confronted with such a solicitor, that we can revoke the permit, and then there is an appeal process to the, to the hearing authority, which would be the select board. And that would be in a, in a, in a quick turnaround period. But what it does is it gives us the ability to control who's on our doorstep. We also wanted to, I wanted to kind of make sure that our, and I had some different language in our first proposal, and then after legal counsel, we, we kind of really clarified it, was, we wanted to make sure that the, the kids in town still have the ability to do fundraisers and go door-to-door and things like that. So we just made it clear here that under eighteen who aren't associated with a for-profit organization in the Town of Air, that they can still do that. And the only profit organization that they can do it for is if they're selling newspapers. We don't wanna take that out of, take that out of their hands either. And this is the latest adjustment that we made, and this came as advice from counsel as well. So as towns have been modifying their transient merchant bylaws or solicitors' bylaws, that the window for operation has been, has been questioned, and some communities had very small windows, others had restrictive windows that weren't really conducive to business. This timeframe seems to be the timeframe that the Attorney General is accepting without any issues. Right now, we're at eight AM to six PM, and this proposal is going from nine AM to nine PM.
And I believe that's the presentation, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments?
Frank Macklin, Groton Harvard Road. Chief, the, the language about exempting minors, is that exempting them from getting a permit or from, I mean, would you be aware that the minors are going about town? I, I guess. I guess I'd like to know that you are aware of everybody who's roaming about town, going
So that's what the permitting process hopefully does, is we know who's in town going door-to-door.
So what about the minors? Well, they don't have to buy a permit, or do they got a permit for you?
So, you know, that's a great question. And I believe that my thought is that they are exempt from the process itself. You know, I don't feel that it would be appropriate to, you know, charge the high school band, whatever the fee is there, you know, $50, you know, to, you know, go through the month of whatever we're in, October, to do that. So I think my thought is that it's exempting them from this process.
I guess I'm concerned. I think, you know, there's too many scams going on, and I could bring in a bunch of 17-year-olds representing some profit organization, and...
So to be clear, this is, and so they can't be associated with a profit organization. So if they're a 17-year-old selling solar...
Yeah.
Then they're not exempt from this. This is really focused for our kids in town who are doing fundraisers for the school, for youth activities, Boy Scouts, things like that.
And I'd like to see that they have something from you that says they're, in fact, from the Boy Scouts. This is a fundraiser that, yep, we're aware of, the town is aware of. Not just somebody roaming about town saying, "I'm a Boy Scout. Can you..." And my other comment would be on the allowable times. I think 9:00 AM to dusk would be a better use of time.
I hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Gino?
Jessica Gino, Mountain View Avenue. My question is, when you issue a permit, say it's a solar company that has 20 people going door-to-door, as a homeowner, answer the door, can I ask to see a permit from that individual solicitor?
Absolutely.
So every representative of a company will have to carry a copy of that permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe that's in here as well, that they have to have that displayed.
Okay.
And that's a great question. And just to clarify for everybody in town, if we have a group that come in that want to sell a product, it's not just the business that has to get vetted through us, it's every individual that is going for that business through town. And we've had circumstances where we've had, you know, half of the crew didn't make the cut, and then the other half, you know, were able to, you know, continue on, so...
Thank you.
Susan Tordella, Hightway. So if I get on this no solicitation list, would that include keeping under ease activity for religious, political, or public policy purposes? Or is it only for the profit-making organizations that would leave me alone?
We would hand it out to everybody. We don't, you know, if you... I guess we would hand it out to everybody.
So these people, if they're coming for religious reasons, have to register through you?
No, they're exempt from that.
And why are insurance, through the moderator, sorry, why are insurance companies exempt? I believe they have scams and they are for profit.
I believe it's in statute, but I think we're checking, possibly.
Please wait, Ms. Neary.
Lori Neary, one more quick question.
Lori, please wait for a moment. I think we're trying to get an answer. Mr. Della's question.
Yeah, the running thought is that it's in statute, they're licensed by the state. So if we find it, we can, we'll let the group know here.
Thank you. Ms. Neary?
Just one more clarification. If you have the solar company that's coming in with 20 people, does each person have to pay the fee, or is the company paying one fee for their 20?
Every person has to, every person has to pay a fee.
Okay, so that could be a fair amount of money. And the other clarification is, an example that I was wondering about is with my organization, the environmental group Pace, if we did door-to-door outreach to share information, would that fall under this requirement? And would we be required to pay a fee per person if so? So it's a nonprofit organization volunteering in air.
Yeah, I'm looking at section, the section that deals with the religious charitable I would say that it would somehow fall under this. Let's remember what we're really trying to do here with this bylaw. You know, it is to protect people in town from people coming in from out of town.
Okay, thank you.
Another commoner question over here. Mr. Adi?
Rick Adios, Bridge Drive. I would concur that the time of 9 o'clock for most of the year is after dark. That's a danger. So I would agree that dusk or sunset would be a better time.
Any further questions or comments?
Pauline Conley, Cambridge Street. Chief, one thing that I don't see with respect to Article four is a reference to the general laws like we had in Article three. I'm not sure if there is one, and I didn't look today, so I just want to throw that one out there. But with respect to the hours, having been the recipient, I should say, of a solicitor at 5:00 in the afternoon on a bright sunny summer day a few years ago, who could not produce a permit, and turned out to have a warrant for his arrest, I don't think anything after dark for any solicitor should be allowed. I don't have anything to write with, I can't make a motion in writing, but I hope someone will and at least propose the dusk, because dusk will be different depending on the time of year. I don't want anyone to suffer, not suffer, because I didn't suffer. I was very rewarded by the department, they all showed up lights blazing. But I, I, thank you, definitely would like to know that others don't have to experience what I did.
Mr. Moderator? I'm sorry, Mr. Pomprion, I couldn't tell who was talking.
Mr. Moderator, Robert Pomprion, the town manager. Just a point of information, I know the chief didn't mention this in the presentation, and maybe town council can speak to it. On the issue of the timeline for the solicitation, we originally had, we didn't have the 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. It was what sort of Ms. Conley and others have mentioned. We were advised from town council that there is several standing case law where this has been challenged and has been upheld in court to be the 9:00 to 9:00. And this has to go to the Attorney General for review, and she does have the authority to amend it, and it is generally amended back to as we have it in the bylaw. Not to speak for the chief, but from my perspective, I agree with all of the points that have been made about changing it to dusk and so forth. But I just want to advise that there were several case law throughout the Commonwealth that has been shot down, and the Attorney General has historically, who has the legal authority to edit the bylaw, has changed it, changed it back.
Thank you, Mr. Pomprion. Ms. Gino?
Jessica Gino, Mountain View Avenue. Based on what Pauline was saying, and I agree, I would just as soon make this modification to dusk, and if the Attorney General turns it back to 9:00 AM, while we tried. So I would propose amending the bylaw language to, for that line, modified allowed times, 9:00 AM to dusk. And I do have it written down.
Could you please bring it forward?
I just wrote, I wrote almost the same thing.
Well, we have Ms. Gino's actually on the floor right now, Pauline, so... We don't have a second. Yeah, we're going to make, clearly have it written, and we can remind people what it is, and then we'll go to the second.
Mr. Moderator, I tried to copy the language directly from the article as best I could.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Copeland has figured out what I wrote.
Yeah, I think Susan's got an idea, so... Would you please read the amendment as you have it?
No permittee under this, this is on page 14. No permittee under this bylaw shall sell, peddle, or solicit between the hours of 9:00 AM to dusk, or on Sundays and legal holidays, unless invited to do so by the owner or occupant of any private residence in the town.
I'm sorry.
Point of order, the times, you can't say no permittee, and then the allowable hours are 9:00 AM to dusk. The way this is written is reversed, because it begins at 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM, that they're not permitted. So it should be from dusk to 9:00 AM in the amendment.
So they want to change back to dusk.
So it's between the hours of dusk?
I understand, but it was written...
It was written backwards.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want me to reread it? No permittee under this bylaw shall sell, peddle, or solicit between the hours of dusk and 9:00 AM, or on Sundays and legal holidays, unless invited to do so by the owner or occupant of any private residence in the town.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I think it's been second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Again, I'd speak in favor of it, and I would like to know the process, if this is passed, and the whole article is passed, what's the timetable for going to the Attorney General? And I would intend to write the Attorney General's office to make our point that 9:00 PM is much too late, and that should not just be an automatic kickback, and others could do the same.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator? There was, yeah, please.
Mr. Moderator, Attorney Corbo has just some information for the body.
Please, Attorney Corbo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So in reviewing, just so everybody understands, because this is a bylaw amendment, it first has to go to the Massachusetts Attorney General for review for consistency with state and constitutional laws. The Attorney General has a period of 90 days to conduct that review, subject to certain extensions that might be granted. In the course of her review, the Attorney General can approve the entirety of the bylaw, she can disapprove the entirety of the bylaw, or she can disapprove only portions. In previous instances, in reviewing similar bylaws, the Attorney General has looked at case law from the federal district court, in which a federal court held that bylaws limiting solicitation to certain daylight hours were unconstitutional. So the risk that you run here is that if this goes to the Attorney General and is disapproved, then what you get back is a bylaw with no time standards in it whatsoever. And it appears that in previous circumstances, the Attorney General has expressed concern over these limitations of, that are somewhat vague, because dusk doesn't have a set definition. As someone already pointed out, it's different at different times of the year. And so here you have a set specific timeframe that everybody can look at and can understand, and which we believe is consistent with case law concerning the amount of reasonable time that solicitors need to have in order to be able to exercise their First Amendment rights.
Thank you, Attorney Corbo.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Livingston?
So just to clarify, because I'm a little concerned, and I'm not saying that you're giving us incorrect information, because I know you are giving us correct information. However, I question that the solicitor has more constitutional rights to come to my home at 9:00 PM than I do to say, "No, you're not going to," and be able to put in a bylaw that evidently the body would like, and, but we're violating their constitutional rights? Something seems a little messed up there. Just want to throw that out there. So I agree, personally, I agree with, you know, the Attorney General should maybe watch the meeting, so that they can also hear what we're saying, too, but...
Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Would you like to comment?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not sure if that was a real question or not, but, you know, it is up to the body to decide and to make a decision. And, you know, as I said before, the risk is that the Attorney General would disapprove this particular section, and in which case, there would be nothing to prevent you from coming back here and putting a different time restriction on there. In other circumstances, I've seen the Attorney General give what she calls a caution, to say that this bylaw has to be applied consistently with the Constitution. So I agree, you know, with Ms. Livingston, that, you know, it's the body that gets to decide, and it's up to you to make a judgment here, and then, you know, the Attorney General can look at the legality of that. Obviously, I am not advocating against this amendment in any way. I'm just sort of passing on what my experience has been. But it is up to you to decide how you want to proceed, and at this point, again, the risk seems rather minimal in that the worst-case scenario is it would get sent back to you, and you'd have another shot at it.
Thank you. I lost track, who came down first? Let me start with my left.
Fred Mechner, 21 Prospect Street. What's the magic number nine? Why is that all of a sudden constitutional? What about eight? What about seven? What about 12? What about midnight? Why is 9:00 the magic hour that makes it so that we're not doing something unconstitutional?
To answer the why, I don't know why that seems to be what's been accepted.
What if we said eight? Is it the time, or is it the dusk that's the problem?
I apologize. I can't answer the question for the Attorney General.
I think you've asked the question multiple times, and the chief has answered, he does not know the answer.
Does the attorney, does the council know the answer to that? He's the one that brought up the constitutionality of it.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So what the court has looked at in the past were communities that only allowed canvassing and solicitation during daylight hours, or prohibited it after sunset. And the court held that legitimate municipal interests of reducing crime and public annoyance can be better served by measures less intrusive than such overly restrictive time limitations. In addition, courts have found that the term dusk is vague, and that it has a lack of character, and raises the specter of both chilling effect and discriminatory enforcement. These are not my words, these are words that were written by the Attorney General, looking at a prior bylaw. So here, you know, you're looking at having a period of time of 12 hours a day that allows for this type of door-to-door solicitation. I can't stand here and tell you that, you know, 9:00 PM is fine, but 8:00 PM is not. However, it does appear that less descriptive standards like dusk or sunset are more problematic, so...
Yeah, it sounds like the problem is the unclear nature of dusk, so let's make it 6:00 PM.
Excuse me. We currently have an amendment we have to take care of. Thank you. Ms. Gino?
I was going to make a friendly amendment to my own amendment, motion, to change this from... from dusk to 7:00 PM. So we could, we could do this, I'll do, I'll do it to 7:00, because I think that allows for, if you do 4:00, I would guess that the state could come back and say, "Well, that disenfranchises residents from having their door rung by a wonderful solicitor after they get home from work." So it seemed to me 7:00 PM was, is reasonable. That's what I would amend my previous motion, to change it to no permitee under this bylaw shall sell, peddle, or solicit between the hours of 7:00 PM and 9:00 AM.
I'm going to turn to the attorney for a quick question. We have amendment that's been moved and seconded, we're discussing it. Now, the author would like to change the amendment.
Friendly to myself.
Yes. Through you, Mr. Moderator, if that amendment is seconded, in your discretion, you can allow the mover to substitute the First Amendment for the second.
Seconded.
That's half the battle, right there. Thank you, Attorney. I was thinking we just say no to the first one and rewrite the amendment, but thank you very much.
So should I bring this up with the change of dusk?
Yes, please.
And then, at the same time, move the question?
You can't move the question, as our esteemed past moderator said.
Well, we need to...
We have people standing? Jim? I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you, I'd like to ask a question of the chief. Chief, since you have presented the idea of a no solicitation list, would it be possible for the homeowners to say, "No solicitors after dark, after 6:00 o'clock, or at another time, and then we solve the problem with both the bylaw and a list that says to the peddler, merchant, or whomever, 'Don't go to that house after 6:00 o'clock.'"
That's an interesting...
That's my suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor, that's an interesting way of getting it in on the discussion of the amendment. I'm sorry, yes.
I'm willing to go with what the decision is.
I'm sorry, Ms. Roddy, we do have a move the question from the...
Right, and I was standing before that was made, and it was made from the floor, not from a mic.
Thank you.
In my opinion, and of course, this goes back to Robert's rules, once the body accepts amendment that's been seconded, it belongs to the body. So I would disagree that you can do friendly amendments.
Thank you.
Move the question.
Thank you. On the amendment...
Which one?
I'm going to ask the clerk to read it for us again. Thank you. Ms. Copeland, would you please read the final version of the amendment?
No permitee under this bylaw shall sell, peddle, or solicit between the hours of 7:00 PM and 9:00 AM, or on Sundays and legal holidays, unless invited to do so by the owner or occupant of any private residence in the town.
Thank you. Voting on the amendment only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries. Back to the article, Article 4. Do you have any, any other comments on the article, or questions? Seeing none. All in favor of Article 4?
Aye.
Article 4 passes unanimously. Excuse me, Article 5, street acceptance, curly circle. To see if the town will vote to accept the layout of Curly Circle as a public way, the meets and bounds of which are on file in the office of the town clerk, as previously laid out by the Select Board, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, a fee interest or easement in such public way, and any and all easements related thereto, and further, to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this acquisition, on such terms and conditions as the Select Board deemed appropriate, or take any action thereon or in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Livingston?
I move that the town vote to accept the layout of Curly Circle as a public way, as printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Second. Moved and seconded, and thank you very much, Mr. Copeland. We have a short presentation, if you would like. Ask Dan Van Skelkwick to come up. Thank you. Director Van Skelkwick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, I'm Dan Van Skelkwick, DPW Director. So just real briefly on the street acceptance of Curly Circle, next slide, thanks Cindy. So it's a subdivision road which has recently been completed, it's off of Littleton Road, I have a map on another slide. And it's substantially complete, there's a couple punch item lists that the developer was not able to get to, and to address those, we ventured into a memorandum of understanding the Select Board has with the developer, assuming that this passes town meeting. To finish the streetlights, which are partially finished, but he's having trouble getting the fixtures, in this day and age, it's typical of that, and also some drainage improvements that we, we just recently became aware of behind a few lots, it's just some road drainage from Littleton Road is getting onto the subdivision, causing impacts during heavier storms. So part of the MOU is that the, there's a surety held of $24,750, so, so we have that cash there, and the developer has to complete these items in order for that to be released. And the, this vote by town meeting, if, if it is a positive vote to accept the street, it's not the final part of street acceptance, as you can tell the way the article's written, it needs, the street would need to be acquired by the Select Board. And so they have 120 days from town meeting to acquire that, so the developer needs to complete these items before the, the street is acquired, or else we would not recommend acquisition, so. Next slide, image of Curly Circle, it's off of Littleton Road. You can see in the red here, it's tough, but... And final slide is just the subdivision plan. One more slide, Cindy, there you go. Street acceptance plan, okay.
Thank you very much, Director. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none. All in favor of Article 5?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 5 passes unanimously. I'd like to ask for a motion to dissolve. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all, thank you very much.